The Greater Wilmington Business Journal. And thank you, everyone, for coming out this morning. There's a strong response from the crowd today and, obviously, a high interest in this year's races. There is that old saying, "All politics is local," and that's clearly what we're going to be seeing on stage today for the people that are going to be here for the county commission races, the state House races for New Hanover County, and the state senate race for New Hanover County. The decisions you all make on your ballots will inevitably have a daily impact on not just your businesses, but also your daily lives. So it's great to see such a large crowd. I think this is the first large public forum that we've had for some of these candidates, so it definitely kicks off election season for our area. Today, we are going to spend about 30 minutes on each of those races I just mentioned. As Rob said earlier, we're going to have opportunities for you all to add your questions into the mix as well. If you look at the phone number in your program or want to text them in to (910) 264-8955. The candidates have all been told that we're going to keep it going and keep it tight on time, particularly so we can get through as many of these topics as we can for each of those 30 minutes, and also out of fairness as well. Obviously, this is their opportunity to distinguish themselves from the other candidates, but we're also going to make sure that we keep a tight eye on equal time for everybody. So to that end, the way we have it structured is the candidates will have a minute to answer the questions that both I and you, the audience, bring up for them. And then up in the front, we're going to have time signs for them, so when they see the yellow card, that will be their cue that they have 10 seconds left, and they should probably finish up that thought. And when they have the red sign comes up, that means their time is done and we'll move on. And there will be some opportunities on some of the questions for rebuttals, but for not everyone. So with that, we're going to kick it off with our county commission race. County commissioners have two seats open this year for the five-member board, so when you get your ballots, you'll have the ability to pick for two candidates. And the four candidates that will be among your selections are seated on stage already. I'm going to start with my immediate left here is Republican LeAnn Pierce, followed by Democrat Travis Robinson, Republican Tom Toby, and Democratic Rob Zappel, who's the incumbent in this race. And to start with LeAnn, we're going to let everyone do a one-minute introduction about themselves and explain why they're running. LeAnn?
Well, good morning, and I want to thank the Wilmington Business Journal for hosting this event, and thank you all for getting up so early to be here this morning to get to know your candidates. I'm LeAnn Pierce. I'm a candidate for New Hanover County Commissioner. And the first thing you need to know about me is I'm a small business owner. I've owned a hotel in Carolina Beach for the last 27 years, and I understand what small business means to New Hanover County. I've been elected for eight years in Carolina Beach. I served six years on our Carolina Beach Town Council, and the last two years as the mayor of Carolina Beach. I did not run for reelection. Instead, I decided to file for county in December. I think, having been a mayor in New Hanover County, I bring a unique set of skills to the commission. I understand the complicated coastal issues. I've served on the Wilmington Metropolitan Planning Organization. I've served on the TDA, Tourism Development Authority. I've built the relationships and the networks that it takes to be successful as a county commissioner, and I'll bring those experiences and that same energy and enthusiasm to work for the citizens of New Hanover County. Thank you.
Travis?
Good morning. My name is Travis Robinson. I'm a 45-year resident of New Hanover County. I was a 29-year veteran of the New Hanover County Sheriff's Office, retired in 2018. Coming up through the years and working with the county, I got to be on several different committees and work with management and leadership across the county, plus some business folks are in this room. And you sit back and you think about, can I make a difference if I get involved? I ran in 2020. I didn't get past the primary. I had about 4,100 votes, 15 of us running for three seats. In 2022, there was nine of us running for two seats, and I've been blessed to get enough votes to get the Democratic nomination to go to the general election in a couple of weeks. I love New Hanover County, and I'm the kind of person, I don't have a whole lot of things that I'm beholden to, specific special interests, but that does not mean that I care, not care, or are concerned about different things. What I would like to do is get on the Board of Commissioners, get sworn in in December, and work with the other four commissioners and do what we can best for the 237,000 citizens in New Hanover County, and make some common sense decisions and make some changes based on what we need to do.
Thank you, Travis. Tom?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you all for coming. My name is Tom Toby. I'm running for New Hanover County Commissioner. I am a lifelong resident of New Hanover County. I grew up in the Monkey Junction area. I was a 26-year firefighter EMT, serving the citizens of New Hanover County, the city of Wilmington, and the town of Brightsville Beach. Now, I am a small business owner. I own Thomas Towing and Transport here in Wilmington. We are a five-time nationally known, award-winning company for being in the top 1% of my industry. Being here with a lot of industry leaders, a lot of folks understand why that's important. I am running to represent local small business. I am running to help bring some more accountability to our local government, and I am running to help bring some balance to the growth, development, and equality of life that we enjoy here in New Hanover County. Thank you.
Well, good morning, everyone. My name is Rob Zappel. I have the honor and the privilege of serving you as one of your New Hanover County Commissioners. I'm running for reelection. Over the past eight years, I've tried to address the focuses, the needs, and the concerns of all the community here in New Hanover County, starting with managing the growth that we've seen over the past 30 years here, always with an eye towards maintaining our quality of life, also making sure that we have the funding for our public education system, so it's high-performing, high-quality system, pre-K through community college, and always providing the funding we need to protect our unique coastal environment. That starts on the coast, our coastal communities, making sure we have beach renourishment funds there, and always, always fighting for clean water. I would address also affordability, housing affordability, and workforce housing. And I see I'm getting the hook from Maggie, so I'll, you know, I'm looking forward to your questions.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Vicki.
Okay, and with that, let's jump in. Travis, we're going to start with you on the first question, and we're going to start broadly. If elected, what would your approach on growth and development in the county be?
What I would do is I would look at all of the comprehensive land use plan. I would look at the planning and zoning in counties' departments' input on the research, on the type of project that is actually put before us, and see if it meets the codes and the requirements, and the developers and everybody are doing what they need to do to make sure it's environmental and sound, that it's within the code that we have, and make a decision based on each individual project and not paint it with a broad brush.
Tom? Tom, you're next.
Repeat the question, please.
Oh, if elected, what would your approach on growth and development in the county be?
One of the things I think we need to look at is the density here in New Hanover County. I did a poll on my social media last week. The number-one concern to the residents of New Hanover County is overgrowth and overdevelopment that is going on here. My thoughts and my opinions on it are, we need to be looking at our densities. We are the second smallest county in the state of North Carolina. We only have so much room here. I grew up in construction. I grew up in building. I understand the balance that we have to have here to be able to do this, but we've got to look at what we're zoning and what we're rezoning. A lot of what I'm seeing happen is we're seeing a lot of commercial industrial land go away for high-density residential. If we do away with our commercial and industrial, which we have precious little of left in New Hanover County, that doesn't leave us a whole lot of room for business and development growth. So we need to be looking at how we're addressing the zonings and where we're allowing things to be to address our crowding and our traffic issues and the stuff that goes along with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Rob?
Thank you, Vicki. Terrific question. I think it's a top of mind for everybody here on the stage and everybody out there as well. We need to address, and I think you're hearing a common theme, higher density in the appropriate areas, especially in the newer northern part of our New Hanover County, where we're seeing, will be seeing a lot of new development and construction, is in our future. That's not to say that we're going to shoehorn higher density into existing neighborhoods. I've been very sensitive about that, and I think if you follow my record, I make a clear distinction between that. So higher density, land use issues, taken by a case-by-case issue, are absolutely in our future. The other, planning forward, you know, looking at, you know, transportation issues are clearly top of mind, how we can pay for and create a higher, better use of a bus system, and transportation, focusing also on trails, walking trails, biking trails, those things that bring the amenities and quality of life to our community, and also protecting and making sure that we have open and green space.
Okay, that's time, Rob. We're going to move the question over to LeAnn now.
Yep. Thank you. All right. Thank you.
LeAnn?
You know, as I travel around New Hanover County and talking to the citizens, growth and development is one of their number-one concerns. We're a very desirable county for people to relocate and move to. That's why we all came here. I've talked to several of you today who just moved here in the last few years. So we're going to grow. So the question is, how do we want to grow? How do we grow responsibly and smart? I think we can do that. We all know there's a housing shortage in New Hanover County, so we have to continue looking at diverse ways to develop our county. But I think the number-one issue for our county commissioners to focus on is the infrastructure. Do we have the infrastructure to support a project? Typically, the traffic is what I hear the people are most complaining about. So I think if we get a handle on some of the traffic issues, that will help with our growth. I think that if you don't grow, you die, so we are going to grow. We have to do that smartly. I think we can balance that with open space. We can balance that with trails and connectivity. As you saw yesterday on the news, just Little Carolina Beach preserved 300 acres of open space in a growing island. If we can do that there, we can do it in the county.
Okay, and Tom, you get the first crack at this question, which comes from the audience. Do you favor, and, I'm sorry, if you had a magic bullet, how would you create more opportunity for affordable housing?
If we had a magic bullet, we would be able to just put houses up and let people live in them. We would be able to do that for free, but we don't have that magic bullet. What we have right now, we have a confluence of a lot of things that are going on in this country, and a lot of that is, and especially in our area. Our land use is expensive. Our land cost is expensive. Building costs are up. Labor costs are up. It would be nice to think we have a magic bullet, but we don't. We have real-world issues that we have to face to try and bring affordability back. And when we talk about affordability, we need to address, what are we, what do we mean when we say affordable? Do we, are we talking about lower-cost workforce-type housing, or are we talking about low-income, subsidized housing? First, we have to define what we're talking about when we go there. The county is not in the housing business. You know, if the county's involved in it, it's either subsidizing on the front end or subsidizing on the back end, and we have all seen what happens when county or government gets involved in trying to control housing in this area.
And Rob?
Thank you, Vicki. Again, I'm really proud of the work that the county commission has done in creating the community plan. For the first time in history, New Hanover County has committed $15 million over a five-year period to help solve and find solutions for the affordable housing and workforce housing problems that we're having here in New Hanover County. That also includes creating a staff of four people who are now dedicated at our planning and zoning department to seek out the country for models and initiatives that will address and bring us the greatest bang for our buck here in New Hanover County. So that's moving. Also continuing what we've been doing with our partnership with the city of Wilmington. We have 278 affordable housing units coming online at the Starway Apartments. The county has put $1.8 million into making that happen. We've also donated 16 acres to Habitat for Humanity to provide housing, affordable houses standalone for 53 homes, and another 27 homes bringing the infrastructure to do. So we're on the path. We've got a lot more work to go, but we've created the framework to find those solutions we need.
LeAnn, next.
Well, of course, affordable housing is a hot-button issue, and it goes back to the supply and demand. There's more demand than there is supply in New Hanover County. So I think we're going to have to look at partnering with our private-public partnerships. We've done some incentivizing, as Rob mentioned. I think that's particularly for tax credit or bonded housing, but we have to look at more diverse housing options in New Hanover County. I think that it's a very serious problem, and we're going to have to look at bringing more jobs to New Hanover County that pay our citizens a higher living wage so that they can afford to live in this county. We can't say that we don't want to grow or bring any economic development here and then say the rents are too high. So, you know, to bring the rents down, you have to have more supply. So I'm open to hearing solutions from our partners and our committees and the people who know more about that than I do, but I will say with some of the COVID relief funds, I don't, don't know how I feel about, you know, continuing to hire the departments in that housing development that we can't sustain after a few years. So I'm looking forward to hearing solutions.
And Travis, to finish out this question?
I think the most important thing is have discussions and listening to folks about different ideas. I know we have the Eden Village project out in Creequahood where the houses are of a certain size. Why not look at making houses a little bit larger than that and make it affordable for the workforce, bringing jobs into the county and having an opportunity for people to live in neighborhoods to be able to afford based on the money that they make? If you spend over 30% of your income on mortgage or rent, what else do you have that money for? So it's a matter of trying to get the higher-paying jobs, manufacturing jobs, trade jobs, things like that, but having discussions and doing the public-private partnerships so that there are incentives, so that the builders and the developers and the suppliers get the money that they put out and make it worth their while to assist in having a certain amount of housing available whenever there's a need over a number of years. So if there's 15 apartments in this particular complex, it needs to be available for 15 years for folks to be able to afford, then let's do that together.
All right, and speaking of jobs, let's move over to economic development, and Rob Zappel will have first crack at this question. But are there any other changes you would support the county making in its economic development strategy, including how incentives are offered by the county?
Yeah. Thanks for the question, Vicki. I am really excited about what we're doing in partnership with CFPUA, our Public Utility Authority, up in the northern part of our county, putting in water and sewer, getting ahead of development for the first time. That's where our future is. Stopping septic tanks from going into our ground, our 199 square miles we have left here, and stop putting holes or wells into our aquifers. That's forward-thinking. That's being creative, and that's economic development so that we have that infrastructure in place so that we can attract businesses and more homes in an appropriate way, in appropriate zoning out there in the northern part of the county. So yeah, I'm very keen on infrastructure and the money that we've received. I thank you from the state that has helped make that happen in partnership with our county and with our CFPUA. That's the way to do it. That's the path to our future with those kinds of partnerships. Thank you very much for the question.
LeAnn?
Yes, as a small business owner, economic development is essential for a thriving community. I think we need to continue to partner with our, our business development partnerships, which would be like WBD and our, our Chamber of Commerce and Cape Fear Community College. We have to continue to bring good jobs to New Hanover County, such as like Live Oak or has done and Sino. They've brought economy to New Hanover County. We need to continue to do that. Our county commissioners need to focus on the infrastructure needed, and I'm excited to develop the northern part of the county in a smart way, and I think that's going to be one of the top issues moving forward in New Hanover County for our county commissioners.
Okay, and Travis?
When businesses just want to come to New Hanover County, they're looking for a workforce. In order to have a workforce and people to be able to do the jobs and make it attractable, you need to have community colleges, you need to have classes, apprenticeships, and all that back in the schools. You had shop, and you had auto mechanics. You had things like that where folks can have other options other than college. College is important, but the trades are necessary because as time goes on, people retire and do different things, so people got to come up and take the slack for those specific jobs. Because if my AC breaks, I want to call someone that's competent, that's going to give a reasonable amount of money to come over and take care of that need, and it's not an after-hour thing, so it's pretty reasonable. But as far as economic development, if we get enough programs and apprenticeships and partnerships to where we have a workforce that's available for people to come and do the jobs, that's what we really need. Thank you.
Tom?
Get back to the question of, you know, incentives to bring business to New Hanover County. I think first thing we need to look at is, what is the cost-benefit or cost-loss to the citizens? It's their money. It's the taxpayers' money that we're using to incentivize these. The biggest experience I have had in the past to this point is the incentives for the film industry. I worked with the film industry for quite some time. The incentives that we put into the local film industry paid huge dividends for this area. We had a workforce at the, at the studios that worked continuous here for over 20 years, and when those incentives went away and our film industry went away and went to Georgia, it was devastating to this area. One production touches 300 small businesses in an area. So those incentives were good. They brought a lot of economic impact to New Hanover County. You, in my opinion, have to take it on a case-by-case basis, again, to look at what is the cost-benefit to the citizens here in New Hanover County.
Also along the lines of economic development, this spring, the county commissioned an analysis on the county's economic development climate from Greenfield Development Company, and in it, identified several job sectors that it recommended for targeting for growth. So I'm curious, and we'll start with LeAnn. What verticals do you think the county should be focusing on in terms of attracting?
So I think that the county's done a great job of attracting businesses to New Hanover County. I think that we need to attract businesses that pay our citizens a higher living wage. We need to look at developing our Cape Fear Community College, our nursing program. We need to look at our trades, as has already been mentioned. I think that our Wilmington Business Development's done a great job of bringing economic development to New Hanover County. I think we need to support organizations like Genesis Block that gives entrepreneurs an opportunity to get started and get on their feet and learn small business. I think we need to continue to support small business in New Hanover County. That is the backbone of our county and the backbone of our country, and it's so important that we continue on that path. And I think that we need to continue to be partners with our current partnerships and with our chamber, and encourage business in New Hanover County.
And Travis?
I think some of the most important things is to have the training and the partnerships available to get the workforce trained through the apprenticeships for linemen, line women, beauticians, all the different types of jobs that bring manufacturing folks here, too, to be able to have a reasonable amount of money to be getting paid in order to afford to live here. Because it's something where you want to come to this area because it's a nice area to live in, but when you start making the money, you start looking at the output of the money that you get in and put out, it's not a whole lot based on what's happening. So you want to try to maintain your money, just like everything else, but you also want to live a good life. So the thing about it is, is sometimes you get additional trainings out there from different sources in the community, and that helps you get more money, and it helps you be a more viable employee in the workforce in the county.
Tom?
When we start looking at the different industries, we could host a huge diversity of industries here in New Hanover County. We had a Goodyear Tire Plant that was looking at coming here. We had a Firestone Plant that was looking at coming here. Because there was feed dragging that happened, those industries went to South Carolina. We need to be more proactive. When we have the opportunity to bring an industry here, we need to be proactive. We need to get on it, and we need to do what we need to do, and it might be the incentivization that we need to get an industry here. We also, we have a rich maritime shipping history here, and one of the things, right across this river, we have acres and acres of land to be able to develop into commercial shipping. It has deep-water port on one side. It has trucking routes to the entire North American continent on the other side. If we can, in a tri-county area, New Hanover County, Pender, Brunswick, start attracting these industries that are going to be going with stuff globally, we have the resources right here to be able to move it, and I think that needs to be a focus on industry that we are trying to bring to this area.
Vicki, I'd like to pick up where Tom left off. I think we're already doing that, and what we need, what we've been lacking is a place for them to go. And look what we did here in New Hanover County out on Blue Clay Road. We built a 100-acre industrial park there that's about to be filled. It has access to rail, natural gas, and also road transportation there. We got a place for them to come. And look at the investments we made up on 421. If you haven't been up there recently, go take, do yourself a favor and drive up there. And look at the amount of activity that building has happened up there, all as a result of the investments that we made over the past five years, particularly in water and sewer. We've now got a place where they, we kept saying, you know, shovel-ready. You can't have a shovel-ready place to put your, your new warehouse or your new manufacturing plant if you don't have water and sewer. So we completed that loop, again, working with our, our great partners at Wilmington Business Development and our state partners in partnering that to make sure we had the money to create those infrastructures. Look what's happening out at the airport and all the good work that's happening out there. Jeff Borker, our new director, has really kind of lit a fire into there, so we now have all that land. Remember, when you drive in, see that beautiful green there?
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Zappel.
You guys get the idea. We got a lot going on here.
Travis, you'll get the, the next question first. In February of 2021, the sale closed on the county-owned New Hanover Regional Medical Center to Novant Health. At that time, as part of the acquisition, the county's portion of the sale proceeds equaled $300 million for a county revenue stabilization fund and $50 million for a mental and behavioral fund. This is separate from the community endowment. If you're elected, where do you think those money should be spent on and when? Starting with Travis.
The most important thing with the community endowment group that's out here, I know, I think it's in December, they're going to start spending some of the first amount of money that they got.
Sure, and I'm sorry, just to clarify, I'm talking about just the county's direct portion of the money, not the community endowment, so we can restart your time.
I, I know with the, the monies that's coming in, it's supplementing the budget. It's a matter of what kind of community programs that they want to spend the money on. I know a majority of the money's based on a supermajority vote of the Board of Commissioners to go over a certain amount. One of the good things they did originally was with the Port City United and the violence that was happening in the community is to free up some money to be able to have the resources and have additional counselors and folks in the schools, to be able to have people for the students to go to and talk about specific issues and get the help that they need, because an SRO is important, and a lot of times, the SRO does a lot more than a rest, just like they did in the old days. It's a matter of, of being a mentor and being a connection for them to be able to talk to and go to if they have a concern. One of the things about the hospital in the beginning was, we were against the actual cell of the hospital. A lot of folks don't realize that it's a Level 2 trauma center, and what happens is there's a lot of diversion from other counties, from the hospitals, and you can't refuse to accept patients.
Okay, and we're going to have to move on to Tom. Your thoughts on the county's portion of the proceeds from the hospital sale?
On the mental health side, I know New Hanover County has had a huge issue with mental health. It drives a lot of what is going on in our homeless community now. I'm not an expert at that. I would need to surround myself with experts to find out where's the best place and the best use of that money and how we're going to use it to address the mental health issues in our area. I've spoken with the director of the Good Shepherd House a couple of times about what is going on here and how that could, how that money could be allocated. I think one of the things is, as far as the, the county's portion of that 300 million, one of the huge things that we're going to be facing here in the next 10 years is replacement of our bridge. It's quickly approaching the end of its service life, and it's not even on the 10-year plan to get replaced, but yet we have more and more traffic every day coming over that bridge, just wearing it out faster. So I think a significant portion of that could be used to help address a lot of our transportation and upcoming infrastructure and transportation issues.
Okay, thank you. Rob?
Thanks, Vicki. In 2020, when we made the hospital deal, our county commission, I think wisely, selected that the, to touch the 300 million or the $50 million, you needed a four-fifths. That means four out of five commissioners have to agree with what we want to spend the money on. So that really causes everyone to come together and to focus on those needs. The short answer to your question is, we want to get it back out on the street as soon as possible, but we want to do it in a very focused, in a very intelligent way, and one that will really last for generations. So we want to be very careful. We've just recently started to dip into it with about $3.8 million going towards community violence and putting counselors and therapists into our schools and spreading out Port City United being a portion of it. Despite what you've heard in some of the news, the $50 million was not promised into any one individual or any individual organization. We are looking at many things, including our healing place, which will be opened by the end of this year, a 200-bed facility over there across from the hospital that will bring much-needed relief, and also, which was just recently announced.
And that's going to be time? We're going to have to let LeAnn answer this question now.
That's called a teaser. Thanks, Vicki.
LeAnn, you get to round out this question.
One thing you'll find out about me very quickly is, I don't like to spend money unless we have to.[1784.63]
down.
That's called a teaser.
Leanne, you get to round out this question.
One thing you'll find out about me very quickly is, I don't like to spend money unless we have to. Just because we have it doesn't mean we have to spend it. It can stay in our reserves until it's needed for something special, and that's why it's a majority vote to spend that money. I do think that school safety is important, and I think the safety of our children is one of the most important things that we can ever do. However, I am very cautious, again, to fund positions that will go away in a few years when, when we don't have any funding, and that's just another tax burden on our citizens. I believe that we need to look at our community college and expand that nursing program so that we can put out more nurses to go work in the hospital where we got that money originally. That is the problem at Novant. We have a staffing shortage, a nursing shortage. And I think that's very important, that we put out more nurses for our community college. I think that is something that I could look at that money for. I think that it's very important that we are conservative with that money and not just spend it because it's there.
Thank you very much. Now, as we finish up our time with the county commission candidates, we want to round out with a question that lets them kind of answer however they want to. We're going to start with Tom. And that question is, if you're elected, what is one thing you would want to accomplish?
We've seen lately, we've had some issue with some of our local commissioners and conduct, and it's not the first time that we have faced this in New Hanover County. I've lived here long enough to have seen this. This is the third episode that I can remember presently going on. And I remember the first episode was very, very frustrating to the commissioners themselves when they had a member of the board that was not behaving, performing as necessary to be a professional, to represent the people here in New Hanover County. We have no way of being able to remove somebody from a local board. It's kind of crazy that we can impeach a sitting president, but we cannot remove a local official that is not performing or is behaving badly. One of the things I would like to see in bringing accountability back to our local government and to our citizens is a way to be able to recall a local official if needed, so that the board does not face the frustrations that they have faced in the past with that issue.
Okay, thank you. And Rob?
Thank you, Vicky. We live in an absolutely gorgeous part of the world, not the United States, the world. I think we all know it. We have a vibrant economy. We have a great quality of life. We have a lot of issues, but we are on a terrific track and moving forward. It's exciting to be in county government and local government. It's exciting to be in business. It's exciting if you're an entrepreneur here. That didn't happen by accident. It happens because we've all set the scene business-wise and community-wise to make that happen. We are all glad to be here and moving forward. If given the opportunity, I'd like to continue the path that I've felt I've been a part of and moving us forward with great speed and great vibrancy, so that we can continue to set for the next generation and the generation after that. We've been handed the tools with the endowment and the other monies that have come into the county, so that we can continue this. There's a spirit of optimism that is coming over us, coming out of the pandemic, and I would love to carry that forward with honesty, integrity, and using the experience that I've gained as being one of your New Hanover County Commissioners over the past eight years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Leanne?
You know, there is great division in our country. There's great division in the world right now. And I'm a consensus builder. I want to build strong communication with the city of Wilmington, with our three beach towns, and with our Board of Education, so that we can all come together and play on the same team for the betterment of New Hanover County citizens. You'll find out, I'm a straight shooter, and I'm going to call it like I see it. And I don't care if you're Republican, or you're Democrat, or you're unaffiliated. When we become elected officials, our job is to represent the citizens and work together to find solutions for the issues that are affecting our citizens. And I'm committed to that type of leadership if elected in New Hanover County.
And Travis?
To be the last one, and you've got some seasoned politicians on the board up here or the dais. When I ran the first time, I was trying to figure out, what would I do? Most important thing is that I've done in the last election, this election, is go around and listen to folks. Listen to folks and understand some of the issues that are going on. And hopefully, if I'm elected, I'll be able to work with the other commissioners to get some things done for everybody. It's just like Leanne was saying, regardless of your political party, the thing is, you represent 237,000 citizens, and you do the best you can to make sure that you do the work of the people. My slogan for my campaign is, let me represent you. Am I going to make mistakes? Of course I would. We all do, because we're human. But the most important thing is, I'm going to follow the law. I'm going to use common sense, and I'm going to rely on friends, family, county management, because there's a lot of knowledge and information from the people that are working in the departments. And there's a lot of folks in the business community who you can sit there and ask a question and get the most honest answer and do your best for everybody. And I'd appreciate your vote, and thank you for having us.
All right, thank you. Can we have a hand for our county commissioner candidates? Thank you very much. Now, as our county commissioner candidates get to remove themselves from the hot seat, we're going to go ahead and bring up the candidates for the two-state House of Representative races in New, for New Hanover County.